Good evening, everyone. Good evening, and welcome to the council meeting here at 5:00 PM Tuesday, October 9th. Seeing that Monday was a holiday, we have it on Tuesday. First point that we want are the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting held September 24th, 2018, and Strategic Planning and Priorities Committee meeting held September 24th, 2018. Do I have a motion to accept? Mr. Mickel, do you have a second? Mr. Chessel, call the question. All in favor? Carry it. Mr. Warren, any additions to the agenda?
None from administration. Thank you.
Any council members, additions to the agenda? Nothing? If so, we move forward with public hearings and notices, which there are none tonight. Delegations and proclamations and petitions, there are none. Reports of standing committees, Mr. Van Betchu, a very light scope of the police commission.
Thank you, your worship. A regular meeting of the Waverham Police Commission was held at 4:00 PM Tuesday, September 25th, 2018. Minutes from the previous meeting were adopted and accepted. Correspondence, Ministry of Corrections and Policing annual report was took as information, and a 2017 crime severity media release is also, the board also took as information. Marriage report. Chief Pritchard presented the marriage report for the month of July 2018. In July 2018 compared to July 2017, the crimes against person had increased by six, crimes against property had increased by one, total calls for service had increased by 160, and the calls for service year-to-date showing an increase by 35 or 1.06 percent. In August 2018, comparison to 2017 of August, the crimes against persons had increased, decreased by one, crimes against property had decreased by 14, total calls for service has increased by 160, and the calls for service year-to-date showed an increase of 535 or 13.97 percent. Chief, in his verbal report, Chief Pritchard reported on various items in the police department. Accounts payable report for July and August was presented and accepted. By law enforcement, Chief Pritchard provided a by-law enforcement activity report for July, August, in August 2018. There were 27 complaints in July and 15 in August. There were 45 parking tickets issued in July and 32 in August. Humane Society report, Chief Pritchard presented the July and August Waverham Humane Society stats report. At the end of July, there were 19 dogs, 17 cats at the shelter, and none were fostered. At the end of August, there was a total of 16 dogs and 24 cats at the shelter, and none were fostered. The board received a report on overtime paid out that did not include bank time for 2016-17, and year-to-date for 2018. This was took as information. New business. Representatives from Envision Counseling and Supportive Center appeared before city council at the regular council meeting held September 10th. Envision provided a sponsorship package and asked for the city's support. Councilor Van Betchu recommended that perhaps it be considered in the 2019 police budget. Chief Pritchard stated they do work with Envision from time to time, but also work with other agencies and cannot just pick one to support. Meeting was adjourned.
That will be noted as being filed. Thank you. We have the consent agenda. We have the, on the consent agenda, we have waysa, the lagoon completion inspection. Mr. Keshat, do you have any report there?
The Water Security Agency conducted their month, like, you know, their yearly inspection on the lagoon. They came up with this informational report. They have some notes that we are working on right now, so they need some discharge values. Overall, like, you know, it was accepted, and we will be doing on those notes.
Any questions, council? Mr. Richard?
Yeah, matter, can you just, for folks at home, when we see things like toxicity tests that are, folks from the Water Security Agency are monitoring them, it's a pass, but still want to watch closely to ensure it doesn't get any worse. Can you help us understand, those are, those are pretty nebulous measurements, and I just wondered if you could help us understand how severe those kind of things are when they make a note like that?
Like, as far as, like, you know, their concerns, they don't have a concern here. Like, you know, the thing here, some of the parameters or some of the criteria for the release for the lagoon, they identified as, like, you know, marginal. Part of the criteria or the things, like, you know, they need to know how many, like, you know, fish survived while releasing, like, you know, the water, like, you know, the lagoon water into the river. So those kind of criteria, they noted. If it is out the parameter, so we are not allowed to discharge, or, like, you know, they put a note like this one. Some of them is, like, you know, some of the notes is keeping the records, some of the records are missing. We are working on them, we are doing a kind of, like, updating our templates, updating our filing system, and, like, you know, all the notes will be covered.
So nothing of great concern in this whatsoever?
No.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, these notes will be adopted. Is there should be a motion? Do you have a motion?
Yes, thanks, your worship. I'll motion that the Water Security Agency Lagoon Compliance Inspection Report be accepted as received.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Call the question. All in favor? Thank you. The accounts payable, there seems to be an echo. Did you hear that? So, we've got, we've got a new sound system in here, so if tonight, there seems to be an echo, that'll be probably rectified here in the next little while, as to what is the problem. Going on, accounts payable with pecuniary interest?
I'll excuse myself, your worship. Thanks, your worship. I'll make a motion that the purchases dated September 20th, 2018, where a pecuniary interest has been disclosed, be passed for payment. The purchases include the accounts payable for $9,936.10.
I'll second that, your worship.
Any questions? Any discussion about that? All in favor? Carry it. We'll now move forward with a note on accounts payable with no pecuniary interest. Do you have a motion, please?
Yes, your worship, I have a motion here that the purchases in the amount of $503,706.62 from September 21st to October 4th, 2018, be passed for payment.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Any questions? No questions? Call the question. All in favor? Carry unanimously. We have the water treatment plant 200 upgrade change order. Mr. Keshat?
Just a correction here, it's water treatment plant upgrade only, it's not a change order. So, we, like, we are tendering, we already have tendered a construction phase for the upgrades for the water treatment plant 200 upgrades. This was, like, publicly tendered on our website and on SASC tenders as well. The tenders closed at, on September 27th, 2018, we received, or KGS received six companies, six tenders, where they evaluated technically and financially as well. The lowest bidder at $946,500 was Clark Supply and Service Limited out of Moosehead, and we recommend that we issue a notice of acceptance to the contractor and restart the work for the updates for water treatment plant 200 right away.
Motion? I'll make a motion, your worship, that the bid of Clark Supply and Services out of Moosehead, Saskatchewan, in the amount of $866,500, to perform the water treatment plant 200 upgrades, with the city waiver would be accepted as presented.
I'll second that, your worship.
Questions? When you say the 200, oh, go ahead, Mr. Van Betchu.
I'm probably going to ask the same question as you, your worship, but the 200 plant, that's the one on First Avenue?
No.
No?
It's the one on 16th Street.
Oh, so it's a part of that?
Yes.
The old plant. Okay. So, was there a budget item for that?
The budget for, the budget for this one is $984,850. Outfit, like, you know, there was a design stage for KGS, which is $83,450.
And this is when you say, water treatment plant 200, there's, is there, how many things? Is it 200 things, or is it just your designation?
Two of them, like, you know, water treatment plant 100 and 200, yeah.
Okay. Very good. Just so that we know, have clarification there. No further questions? Call the question. All in favor? Carry unanimously. We now go into introduction of bylaws. Building official Kaufman, we have the bylaw 2018-3384, amending zone 39 Second Avenue Southwest. Present, please.
We have received a request to rezone 39 Second Avenue Southwest from Urban Holding to R5 Residential Mobile Home, from Darcy Priggin. The existing dwelling unit which was located there has now been demolished, and the owner would like to subdivide the lot to create two new mobile home lots. However, the property in its current zone, no future development can occur until it's rezoned. Public advertisement notice was given as per the Planning and Development Act 2007. There have been no comments or concerns as a result of the public notice. Therefore, staff recommends that council give second and final reading to bylaw 2018-3384.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'll make a motion that bylaw 2018-3384 to amend zoning bylaw 2003-2099 for the purpose of rezoning Lot 16, Block 55, Plan M4926, from Urban Hold, from UH Urban Holding to R5 Residential Mobile Home, to be read a second time.
I'll second that, your worship. Discussion? No discussion? Or is there discussion? Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. Amanda, that property, if I'm familiar with it, is, has no sewer system in there, but if, under the rezoning, they'll have to tie into the existing sewer lines, and...
When anybody goes to put in a mobile home there or future development, they will need to tie into the sewer main on Second, or First Avenue there, yes.
Okay, thank you.
No further questions? Call the question. All in favor? Carry unanimously. Mr. Chessel?
Your worship, I'll move that bylaw 2018-3384 to amend zoning bylaw 2003-2099 for the purpose of rezoning Lot 16, Block 55, Plan M4926, from UH Urban Holding to R5 Residential Mobile Home, to be read a third time and passed.
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question. All in favor? Carry unanimously. Moving on, bylaw 2018-3385, rezone 1531st Avenue Northeast.
We've had a request to rezone the most southerly, 42.98 meters, of 1531st Avenue Northwest, from Highway Commercial to Medium Industrial, for Justin Iverson of DSI Contracting. DSI is in the process of developing a new contractor shop and yard for a new lease holder. Contractor shops and yards are permitted in medium industrial zone, however, they are discretionary in Highway Commercial. Public advertisement notice was given as per Planning and Development Act 2007. There have been no comments or concerns from the public notice. Therefore, staff recommends council give second and final reading to bylaw 2018-3385.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'll make a motion that bylaw 2018-3385 to amend zoning bylaw 2003-2099 for the purpose of rezoning the most southerly, 42.98 meters by 93.88 meters of Lot B, Plan 71R18860, from HC Highway Commercial to MI Medium Industrial, be given second reading.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? No discussion? Call the question. All in favor? Carry unanimously. Mr. Chessel?
I'll move that to bylaw 2018-3385 to amend zoning bylaw 2003-2099 for the purpose of rezoning the most southerly, 42.98 meters by 93.88 meters of Lot B, Plan 71R18860, from HC Highway Commercial to MI Medium Industrial, be read a third time and passed.
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question. All in favor? Carry unanimously. Move on to bylaw 2018-3387, rezone 8th Avenue Southeast. Amanda?
We've had a request to rezone lots 45, 47, and 48 of Block 2, Plan 99SE38080, from Urban Holding to Highway Commercial, from Minor's Leisure World. With the property rezoned to Highway Commercial, the proposed use of the land, recreational vehicle sales, service, repair, and rental would be a permitted use and fits within the property land uses. Public advertisement notice has been given as per the Planning and Development Act 2007. There have been no comments or concerns as a result of the public notice. As such, staff recommends council give second and final reading to bylaw 2018-3387.
Do you have a motion, please? Do we have a motion? Mr. Mickel? Okay.
Your worship will make a motion that bylaw 2018-3387 to amend zoning bylaw 203-2099 for the purpose of rezoning lots 45, 47, and 48, Block 2, Plan 99SE38080, from Urban Holdings to Highway Commercial, be given a second reading.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Call the question. All in favor? Carry unanimously. Mr. Mickel?
I'll continue on, your worship, thank you. I make a motion that bylaw number 2018-3387 to amend zoning bylaw 2003-2099 for the purpose of rezoning lots 47, 45, 47, and 48, Block 2, Plan 99SE38080, from Urban Holdings to Highway Commercial, be given a third reading and passed.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question. All in favor? Carry unanimously. Now moving forward, the last bylaw, 2018-3388, the off-site development levy bylaw. Amanda?
As per the Planning and Development Act, Section 169 and 172.3B, city council may pass a bylaw establishing and charging off-site development levies or subdivision servicing fees for one or more purposes described in the act. Public notice was sent out as required and posted in two consecutive issues of the Waverham Review, on the city Waverham website, as well as available at City Hall, with no concerns or issues being brought forward. Staff recommends council give second and final reading to bylaw 2018-3388, a bylaw to establish off-site development levy.
Do we have a motion, please?
Worship, I'd like to make the motion that bylaw 2018-3388 be in the off-site development levy bylaw for the city of Waverham, be read a second time.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Any discussion? If not, call the question. All in favor? Carry unanimously. Mr. Wheeler?
Your worship, I'd like to make the motion that bylaw 2018-3388 be in the off-site development levy bylaw for the city of Waverham, be read a third time and passed.
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question. All in favor? Carry unanimously. There, moving forward, there's no unfinished business. New business. Amanda, we have a home occupation at 223 Sixth Street.
An application has been received from Bill Laidlaw to operate a county business from his residence at 223 Sixth Street Northeast, located in R2 Zone. The business will operate during the hours of 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, by appointment only. This would be considered controversial use, as the occupation involves clients being directed to the home throughout the day. With minimal anticipated increase to traffic flow, parking in the driveway will be available for his clients. Neighborhood notices were mailed out September 13th, 2018, to all neighbors within 75 meters of his home. No concerns or objections were received, however, one neighbor wanted to ensure that only Mr. Laidlaw is operating the home occupation, and that no other occupations will be operated from that dwelling. Staff is recommending council approve the home occupation for 223 Sixth Street Northeast with the following conditions. The operator of the home occupation must reside at the home. No person other than the resident of the dwelling unit shall be engaged in the home occupation as an employee or volunteer. No advertisement carrying out the address of the dwelling in which the home occupation occurs may be placed in any media. The face of any home business sign on site must not exceed .092 square meters and must be placed within the inside half of the front yard setback. Home occupations are subject to periodic review to ensure compliance. The owner's driveway shall be used for off-street parking for clients. No more than one client per appointment shall be at the dwelling at any time during the hours of 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and a city Waverham business license shall be obtained prior to the operation of the home occupation.
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion that the application for a home occupation from Bill Laidlaw to operate an accounting business from his residence at 223 Sixth Street Northeast, Lot 2, Block 27, Plan D2537, be approved with the conditions provided.
Do you have a second?
Yes, your worship, I'll second that.
Discussion? Mr. Richards?
Thanks, your worship. Amanda, you and I have had this discussion very, very many times, and I know that coming forward, we've got some of these, this one particularly, and a few others in the past where we've talked about enforcing the conditions that are inside of these things, and with this one particularly, there has been a concern. So do we have a plan to monitor this?
Um, I have talked to Police Chief Pritchard, and we have discussed that Carla will stop there shortly after they visit to ensure that it's being operated in compliance with the zoning bylaw.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
And we are moving forward to, just to add to that discussion, that we're also to aid in Carla, enforcing that. We also have a CSO that we, the police department is going to be hiring within the future, either in November or else going into the next year, depending on the training schedule, and that will be one of the duties, also assisting in checking and ensuring all home occupations are be complied with along the way. So strengthening the home, the compliance issue, to make sure that it's working. Call the question. All in favor? Carry unanimously. Our last one is, again, another one where we're going to have to, I'm sure there's going to be concern about compliance with it, is the outdoor rink. Mr. Warren?
Thanks, your worship. So we had a request from Ryan Bernie for the third straight year here to have an outdoor rink put in Gordon Miles Place in the park area. So what we've done is, we've actually provided the same setup as we did last year. So it would be from October 15th to April 1st, you could have the board structure up for the outdoor rink. We would have the public access to the rink until 9:30 every night, and then zamboni would have to be done clean ice by 10:00 PM. Based on those, those things we went through with our staff, there's no concerns from us at all. As it being a public park, we do require a motion from council to move forward with allowing Ryan to once again put an outdoor rink in that space.
Do you have a motion, please?
Yes, your worship, I'd like to make the motion that the administration be authorized to sign an agreement as presented by Ryan Bernie for the operation of the, and maintenance of an outdoor rink for public use at Gordon Miles Place for the 2000 slash 2018-2019 winter season, with the terms and conditions as set forth in this agreement.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Mr. Van Betchu?
Thank you, your worship. I'd just like to make note that, I hope that this year that Mr. Bernie will come in and sign the agreement prior to the construction of the rink, just to make sure that everybody is aware of the conditions and is just good due diligence to make sure that, in the agreement that the city makes, that it is signed prior to the undertaking of the, of the project.
Mr. Mickel?
Thank you, worship. The time factors, I'm sorry. Sorry, thanks, Matthew. The time factor, your worship, of 9 o'clock is, I have no problem with that, and I'll tell you the reason.
9:30.
I'll tell you the reason why.
9:30?
I'll tell you the reason why. We don't have that many outdoor rinks in Waverham, and we thank these people for doing what they're doing. So what happens when you have it at 9:30, you have, end up having 15-year-olds playing with eight-year-olds? Because the timelines are narrowed down. So in my vision of safety, it'd be nice to put at least till 10 o'clock, and give these older adults, or, or young people, an opportunity to skate without causing interference with a seven or eight-year-old. It's nice to have those age groups, because if the time is stressful as it was last year, that situation did happen, and there was some situations that we, we could probably avoid by making it at least to 10 o'clock.
Mr. Phil?
I would just like to, from a young person's perspective as well, agree with Counselor Mickel for what he's saying, because there will be, like, the age difference, so as long as there's no complaints from the neighbors extending the timeline, I think is a good idea.
Further discussion? I'll... I'll support you on that, Mr. Mickel, if you go ahead and make a motion to have that amended.
I can certainly do that, your worship. If we can add the, at 10 o'clock situation?
And then, then the zamboni would have to be off at 11.
Off by 10:30.
By 11.
Or by 11.
By 11.
Right, right now, sorry, your worship, right now it's 30 minutes, so you have it done at 9:30 and then 10, so you'd be doing it until 10:00 till 10:30.
Okay.
Just for clarification.
Yes, okay.
Okay with that, your worship?
You go ahead.
Thanks, worship. I just wonder, curious why those times were chosen initially?
Well, just, before you start there, we, as a matter of procedure, do we have a second for that motion? Of Mr. Mickel's motion?
I'll second that, your worship.
Okay. Now, discussion.
Sorry, your worship, thank you. Just curious, Matthew, why, why those times were, or maybe were they just arbitrarily chosen, or was there's a lot of sort of research or rationale behind those original times?
No, I believe the original times were just something discussed between Mr. Bernie and the city during the past two agreements, and then our plan was just to follow those previous agreements.
So you don't envision any, any, I don't know, troubles with these new times?
Nope, nope. For you guys right now, 11 o'clock is your, your noise time right now anyway, so there's no concerns that way. I think leaving it at 10 o'clock's a kind of a good move moving forward, just because it is tied to a residential area, but I think that it's valid concerns with different age groups going through that space.
Perfect. Thank you.
I think, and I don't know, just as we're going to vote on this one, then we'll, so I guess the, what the vote is now, is that we amend those times, right? That's what the vote is. It's not, it's not voting on whether we're going to accept the agreement. Okay. So we're voting on amending the times, just for a couple, point of clarification. All in favor? Carry unanimously. Now, moving back, stepping back, many to vote on the whole thing, any discussion before we vote on the vote. I guess, again, one of the points that was raised up in the past there, just to make sure that, as we talk about our city bylaw, obviously it'd be more about our police force would have to monitor it, is simply the, the traffic congestion, so long as there's, we start, start having a various amount of, large amount of traffic into there and interferes, but again, that becomes a police situation that they'll have to deal with along the way. Call the question. All in favor? Carry unanimously.
Thank you, worship.
There are no inquiries and announcements?
I applaud your worship.
Oh, pardon me. Sorry.
Thank you very much. The Walk of Fame, your worship, is every two years, as you're aware, and the city of Waverham is now accepting nominations for the 2019 Walk of Fame Award. This award honors citizens... This award honors citizens in our community for outstanding achievements in the field such as athletics, academics, culture, medicine, and technology. Nomination forms can be picked up from our city clerk dinette, and you can also find more details on our city website, and we look forward to seeing these nominations coming in, and this ceremony will take place usually the next second week in June, in a task with the car show, so we look forward having those nominations come in, and our committee will get right at it, and we'll choose the two nominees for 2019.
Mr. Chassell?
I have another one also, your worship, just a reminder to citizens of Waverne, that part of our Teteau Parkway Trails, we do have a plant a tree program. They start as low as $50, up to 250, so it's a, it's a great way for, in memory of a loved one, celebrate a special occasion, or just, because our mayor's great, you could plant a shrub for him for $50.
Thank you.
There's also a buy a bench program, which would get you a plaque on the bench, but yeah, just a reminder to citizens of Waverne, and if, if you have any questions, come by City Hall or check out the website. Thanks.
You're promoted to deputy mayor next month. Thank you for the guy. Anyway, moving forward, any other announcements? So with that, we had a very good, your flavor, the Agriculture's Department had the flavors of fall. Mr. Bailey, if you want to comment on that?
Yeah, it was a packed house, and it seemed like everybody, well, I'm sure everybody was having a good time with the, with the amount of conversations going on and everything. Actually, there's an agricultural meeting tonight, your worship, that I'm not going to make it to, obviously, but hopefully next council will be able to report on that. Well received in the community, and good on everybody for coming up. Takes a lot of volunteers, so thank you to all of them that stepped up in the egg society, doing a great job on this one again.
And tomorrow morning, I'll be representing the city on global TV tomorrow morning, and on the 24th of October, 25th of October, I'll be at a mayor's caucus in Regina, and that morning I'll be on, representing the city again on CTV, and they're talking to all the mayors in various cities about what is going on, and the excitement within, and I surely hope that I represent the city well, and present all the excitement that we have going on, as we have their new community center moving forward, and new schools, and so much, any variance of a lot of things going on within the city. So we look forward to that. Any other announcements? One inquiry, and I know this is, this is one, Mr. Kestha, that is just, every council member is being asked about, government rule. Do we have a detail as to what is going to happen there? If, if it rains, or if it doesn't rain, we see, what is going to happen here?
I just was texting Jordan from ASL bathing, when I was, sorry for doing this while I was in. So he said that, like, you know, bending weather, like, you know, the weather forecast shows that next Monday will be a good day for bathing, so we are planning for doing it next Monday. If, and I hate to say this, so hopefully we'll do this, like, you know, this bathing, this temporary bathing, by, by the end of next week will be completed, and government road is swept and, like, in a good condition for driving. If unfavorable condition happen, and we are not able to wave it this year, we will backfill the trench to the level of the asphalt, and we'll open government road during winter. It will have a surface for driving on even surface, and this is not the favorable solution, but it will be open during winter time.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions? And I got, I was at the flavors of fall, and that was one constant question going around and around. Anyway, so thank you for, I appreciate that. Inquiries, there's no notice of motion? There's no request of clarification? There's no committee of the whole, and with that, I bid you all adieu, and we will call this meeting adjourned.